I call the meeting to order and, uh, well, everybody, please, I guess, stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Got it.
Pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty.
For all.
All right, that sounded great. Roll, uh, sorry, announcement. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have a date of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published, and are transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. All right, the meeting is open to the public for comment items on the agenda, and this is where I'm gonna unmute everyone. And then I'm gonna just give it a second or so, just in case. All right, seeing none, we're gonna mute everybody again, and then there'll be another opportunity later on if anybody wants to comment. So just give me a second, I have to unmute my board members again. Splendoria, Miga, Mr. Shoner, and Mr. Featherman. Okay, oops. All right, I think we are good now. All right, uh, committee reports. Anybody have anything to talk about?
Uh, no.
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 All right, um, Mr. Featherman, I don't know if you wanted to take this opportunity to kind of talk about it's, it's sort of, it's day one of distance learning, so I don't know if you maybe want to mention that now before we get started and how day one went?
I could certainly do that. You know, as we had spoken earlier in executive session, generally speaking, the, the feedback that I can provide is best, you know, regurgitated, if you will, from the public, and we've gotten good feedback. The folks that have taken a moment to email us, to call us, it seems as though, uh, the plan is being executed well. Uh, it is day one, it was day one. Uh, this may be a, a lengthy virtual stay, and, you know, I'll say a few things in my superintendent's report, but we're, we're pleased with where we are, our ability to monitor attendance, the ability to deliver virtual learning. Again, we're just beginning, but we're optimistic that we'll be able to, you know, working together, meet the needs of our students virtually and at home.
Great, thanks, I appreciate that. And obviously, we know that you and all the administrators and all the teachers and everyone have worked really hard, um, to kind of make this happen on such short notice, so we ask everybody to kind of just bear with us as we kind of move along. Okay, so moving on, we have some board presentations, and Mr. DeVita will be speaking to all of them. And the board presentations, are they available on our website right now?
Yes, there, there should be a link, um, on our website, uh, right where the agenda is. Uh, there should be a link that'll take you to a, a PDF version of this, uh, presentation.
Perfect.
Ready for me to go?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, all, all the board members should have, um, a copy of this, um, it was emailed to you. Um, at our, at our meeting last week, um, we heard, um, the presentations for, uh, technology and also special services, uh, so this will cover, um, a lot of the other, um, uh, pretty much the, the rest, the remaining areas of the budget. Um, and it'll include all of the salaries and everything, um, and the instructional area, um, our athletic area, administration, uh, buildings and grounds, transportation, and benefits. Um, if you go to the, um, the second slide, um, it, it gives a summary, um, all of the categories that I just talked about, um, and it gives what our, um, uh, the budgets are for our current school year that we're in, and then also the proposed, um, school year that we're, will be going into a next year, the 2020-21 school year, uh, so you'll, you'll, you'll see, excuse me, you'll see what the increases are, um, for each, um, uh, area of the, uh, the budget there. Um, and then I'll, and the, um, the slides going through here, I'll, I'll give a more detailed, um, uh, explanation of, of them, how we came to those numbers. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, um, it should be the, uh, regular instructional programming, um, slide, and, um, this just shows, um, the different categories that, that makes up, um, that part of the budget. Uh, we have, uh, salaries, um, which, uh, going into next school year, um, is a little over $8.8 million. Uh, these are the salaries of all of our regular instruction teachers in grades K to 12, um, and also any, uh, substitute teachers, um, that we have budgeted, any class coverage or detention or home instruction or anything like that, um, is included in the salaries part of the budget. Our purchase services, um, this is areas of where, uh, we hire outside companies, uh, to come in and help us. Um, there's a portion of, uh, Genesis, uh, student software is here, uh, we have other, uh, software services that, uh, that we use for, uh, instructional areas, and, um, uh, some copier leases and, uh, charges are, are included in this budget, um, and that does have an increase, um, compared to last year. Um, next is our supply budget. Uh, this includes, um, uh, supplies for every grade level and subject area, um, and then that has a slight increase. Uh, our textbooks, um, this is sort of a, a, a remaining, a, a study here, um, it's just basically this is, um, uh, any replacement textbooks that we need. Um, this isn't any, like, new textbook series, um, wouldn't be included in here. This is if any, uh, school, um, is, are running low if they have an increased enrollment, um, or, or if they need, need some new books, uh, this is where, uh, that money would be budgeted. Um, and lastly, our other objects, um, that is, uh, the expense for, um, our SAC, um, person in the high school, uh, and also some, uh, music, um, uh, department, um, funds in the high school. Uh, so overall, um, the, the budget for instructional programming is, um, $9,285,233, and this makes up, um, a little over 20% of the budget. Uh, the next slide is our co-curricular activities and athletics. Um, and all this here, this includes all of our advisors. Um, basically, um, the majority of our advisors are in the high school and middle school. Um, includes any, uh, from drama, uh, the yearbook, um, any class advisors or clubs, uh, that's included in this budget. And, uh, we, we do have a few new clubs, um, in, in a next year's budget in the high school, uh, so that's why there's a slight increase, uh, for there. Um, our co-curricular supplies, um, this includes any supplies for graduation, uh, the high school play, uh, the high school newspaper, the literary magazine, um, all, all these salaries are, um, or supplies are included in here. Um, athletic salaries, um, that number includes all of our salaries of our coaches, um, our trainer, um, the, the secretary for the athletic department, and also, um, a, any game help, uh, that we have, um, for, uh, all of our home games. Uh, professional services, um, uh, if you, if you see that this number is going up, um, a little bit more than, than the other areas. Um, the, the main, um, uh, portion of the budget here is that ice hockey program with the Seck Valley, uh, we do have a shared service with them, uh, and then over the years, um, there has been an increase in Cedar Grove students playing ice hockey and a decrease in the Seck Valley students, uh, so that causes, um, uh, it, it's based on a percentage, so it causes, um, Cedar Grove to pay more and, um, Seck Valley to pay less, uh, so that's why they're, uh, we are projecting an increase, um, in, in that. And then we also have, um, any, any repairs of equipment for athletics, and reconditioning is included in this, uh, line too. Um, our athletic supplies, um, is all of the supplies, uh, for every sport and the trainer. Our athletic dues, um, these are all, uh, conference and league dues, um, are included in this budget, and, uh, a lot of the, uh, league dues, uh, have, have gone up, uh, so that's why I see an increase there. And, uh, game expense, um, these are, um, uh, the expenses of, uh, any of our, our home games, basically, any, uh, a, a lot of our officials, uh, if we have any assigner, uh, fees for any sports, and at any time any of our sports play in a, a tournament, um, the, the, um, uh, expense is charged to this account. Uh, not included i- in this, but in this, um, slide is, um, uh, transportation for our, uh, uh, busing, uh, for all of our athletic away games, um, that, that is coming to $176,000, and, um, it's not, in this slide, it's included in the transportation slide, uh, later on. Um, our next slide is our health services, uh, uh, budget, um, and, uh, this, this budget is, uh, going down, um, into next school year. Uh, we do have, uh, one of our nurses will be retiring next school year, uh, so that's why that the budget is, uh, less going into next school year. Uh, we have the, uh, our salaries included here. Um, our purchase services are for our, uh, school physician, uh, that, that we pay for and any, um, uh, drug screening or any, uh, calibration of our, uh, uh, audiometers are in, in here. Um, supplies are basically any medical supplies, uh, that the nurses use, um, in their schools, and, uh, the other object are any, uh, uh, medical waste, um, uh, pickup, uh, that, that the companies come in to, uh, get any, like, the needles or anything like that that are used. Uh, next slide is our guidance services. Um, this amount is, um, going up in, into a next school year. Um, the main reason why, because of this is because we're in our salaries line. Uh, you see that the biggest increase, so that's because, um, uh, the salary of our SAC, um, is, um, is included in, in this budget for next year. It was taken out of another area, um, so that's why that, that the bigger increase. Uh, purchase services is, um, 80% of our Genesis, um, uh, software i- is included here, um, and the supplies, uh, come to any, um, uh, SAT practice books, uh, PSAT tests, um, and any, basically, any other testing is included in here. And, uh, the other object are, uh, we do, we do have a, a membership, uh, for our, our guidance, uh, for Naviance, and, uh, some professional memberships are, are included in here. Uh, next slide we have is for our media services. Um, and here is all of the salaries of all of our, uh, media specialists in, in the, um, in the schools, and, um, uh, you, you do see a, a decrease here. Uh, we do have, excuse me, um, uh, one of our, um, uh, media, uh, specialists, uh, uh, retired during the year, the current year, um, so that's why you see a, a, a decrease going into next year. Um, and the, the, um, uh, supplies are, um, a, any of the supplies for our, uh, libraries, any, uh, uh, books, uh, certain subscriptions that they have, um, uh, and also the payment for, uh, the virtual high school, uh, is included in this budget. Uh, next we have our budget for our instructional staff training. Um, and here we have a percentage of our, uh, district supervisors, uh, for, for our, um, the, the staff are included in here, uh, under the salaries, and also a portion of our, uh, secretaries included here, and any, uh, curriculum writing that we might have for any, um, um, uh, coursework. Um, our purchase services here, um, this is where we have, uh, certain software. We have, uh, Moviemax, our, uh, Rubicon software, Performance Matters, Frontline, um, certain, uh, workshops, uh, professional development workshops, and any AP workshops that we have to, uh, send our teachers to. Uh, there's supplies, um, it, it's, uh, going down, um, for next year, uh, because we, we have stopped using, uh, one of our, um, uh, carriers for, for supplies, we, we are going to something else, uh, so the, that's why the, the budget is down there. Um, and, uh, a, a, other object includes, uh, some gifted and talented membership and, uh, certain parent and student events. Uh, next slide is our administration. Um, in this, um, uh, for salaries in, in this budget here, um, this includes basically all the salaries of, um, in the superintendent's office, the business office, um, any, uh, principal, vice principals, and our, our directors, um, the special services, athletic director, uh, they're included in this, uh, this slide here. Um, our, our legal fees, um, amount to our, uh, the payment that we pay for our general counsel, uh, for anything from negotiations to special ed, uh, construction council, um, and, and that's remaining the same. Um, our auditor and architect, uh, fee is included in here, um, and that's, um, a remaining, um, a little slight increase, but it's, um, a remaining the same almost. Our purchase services, um, these are the, um, uh, services that we use for, um, uh, our, our fixed assets. Uh, we have a pri- a separate company that does that for us. Uh, we have, uh, uh, our policies, books by Strauss Desme, um, and our, uh, uh, the, um, service of our, uh, evaluation model with Strongen Associates is included in here, um, any, uh, SWF reach, um, that we use for, uh, many time we, uh, call out to the public, uh, for any snow day or anything like that, emergency, uh, that, that fee is included in here. Um, any, uh, time we advertise in the, uh, the newspaper, um, and our, uh, software for, um, uh, CSI that includes all of our personnel software, our accounting software, um, that, that's all included in here. Um, under communication, uh, that's basically the fee for our Optimum Light Path, um, it's basically to keep all of our in-urn access and all of the, the phones and everything to keep that working. Um, our fire alarms, um, any cable boxes, the posters machine are all included in this budget. Um, uh, supplies are basically the supplies for all of our, um, uh, offices, um, both in the superintendent's office, business office, and any, uh, school office is, is included in here. Um, our other objects, um, this includes any, um, a fee that we pay, um, uh, for, for the volunteers to get their fingerprints done, um, and any, uh, memberships or dues or conferences, uh, comes out of this budget. Um, and our board of ed dues and fees, um, this is the fee for, uh, New Jersey school boards, uh, we are required to be in that, um, so that, this is that fee, and then also some other, um, uh, we have a program with, uh, Moncler State University, that's in here, and our, uh, Garden State Coalition is, is included in that line also. Uh, next slide is our buildings and grounds. Um, salaries here are for all of our custodians, grounds workers, um, our supervisors, uh, of building the grounds, anytime we have any overtime work, uh, anytime the custodian or anybody's absent, uh, substitute pay, part-time workers and summer workers, uh, are all included in this budget. Uh, purchase services, uh, this is basically for hiring any outside vendors, uh, for any HVAC work that we might have, electrical plumbing, or for any boilers, or any equipment repair, um, uh, the geese patrol or tree removal, uh, that's all included in this budget here. And, uh, you, you do see a, a decrease, uh, going into next year, uh, in this line, and, and that is mainly due because of, uh, the, uh, charge, um, uh, we got some insurance money, uh, to pay for the, the water, um, uh, damage that we had a couple of years ago, um, and by the time we got the money, um, and, uh, paid for it, it was, uh, included in our, our, um, 2019-20 budget, uh, so that's why it was about $130,000, so that's why the amount is, um, is, uh, by taking away that money and then our, uh, that's why our current budget is a little bit less. Our, our budget going into next year is a little bit less. Uh, insurance line here, uh, that includes any, uh, premiums for our insurance. Uh, this is, uh, not any health insurance, but this is our, uh, property insurance, any legal liability insurance, and our student, um, uh, uh, accident insurance, uh, for, for athletics, that's included in here. Uh, supplies are basically, um, everything, um, that we, um, use to, to, uh, clean and maintain the building, um, they're all included in this, uh, the supply budget. Um, uh, other objects are basically all of our, uh, boiler license renewals, um, in certain areas, uh, there. Um, energy, this is all of our, um, uh, gas and electric, um, costs here, and, um, any gasoline that we, um, uh, use to, uh, fill all, all of our, uh, board-owned vehicles. And, uh, that, that number is going down, um, uh, projecting it to go down next year. Uh, we have, uh, purchased some, uh, new LED lights, um, so we're hoping that that'll, that should, uh, decrease our, um, our budget going into next year. Uh, the next slide is our transportation, uh, budget. Uh, salaries, we, we have a, a, a portion of, uh, one of our secretaries is, is, uh, charged the heater, uh, because she, she does, uh, some work, um, uh, mainly just dealing with transportation. Our purchase services are, um, uh, we have a, uh, a decrease going into next year, uh, because we, we have, um, uh, taken over a lot of the, um, uh, we don't, uh, bid the services out, we, we, uh, bid them all in-house, um, so that there was, it was a decrease. Uh, over the last couple of years, uh, the bu- this part of budget has gone down, um, uh, but just because we have, uh, taken it more in-house and, and we have bid our own routes. Um, there is still a fee in there because we, we do, um, uh, get, um, a certain software, uh, from a, a, a company that, that we use to, um, uh, track all of our, uh, routes and everything, uh, so that, that's what that fee is. Uh, aid and loop payment, uh, this, this is the money that we have to pay for, um, any students attending a, a private school, um, as long as it's under 20 miles. Uh, we, we have to reimburse, um, uh, every student, uh, $1,000, uh, for, for attending a non-public school. Our regular ed is, um, the, the expense that we pay for all of our, we have four, um, uh, regular ed routes, um, and, and, uh, this is the, the fee for those, uh, to, for transporting the, uh, uh, the students, uh, to the schools that are over, uh, the, the required mileage, uh, which is, uh, two miles, uh, for elementary and, uh, a middle, middle school, and, um, uh, the high school is, uh, two and a half miles, uh, so that, that, those four routes include all of those students that qualify. Uh, our athletic and field trips, um, this is the, uh, the budget for all, all of our athletic trips, um, uh, all of our away, um, uh, games, and also, uh, uh, field trips are, are included in this, uh, budget here. And our specialty routes, um, this is the, the majority of transportation budget. Uh, we currently have 16 routes that, that, uh, go out, um, and this is the expense for, for all those. We, we do have, um, a budget and, and increase, uh, for that for next year, uh, because of, um, the, uh, a lot of the, the routes are going up a lot. Um, if we have any new students coming in, um, uh, when we, uh, bid them, uh, a lot of them have been coming in a lot higher, um, uh, than, than usual, so that's what that, that budget is there. And the last slide is our benefits. Uh, this, this makes up, um, next to our salaries, this, this makes up the, the second largest part of our budget. Um, uh, the social security, uh, line, uh, this includes any payments, uh, that we pay the state for any non-certified staff, uh, such as secretaries and any, um, maintenance or custodians or paraprofessionals, um, we, the, uh, the board has to pay for them, and the, the estate pays for all of the, uh, teachers or any certified, uh, staff. Uh, PRS, uh, PRS, that, that's the pension payment, um, that we, um, uh, pay to the estate, again, for the, uh, non-certified, uh, staff, such as the secretaries and custodians. Uh, the DCRP, uh, that is the pension payment, uh, that we pay the state for certain hourly employees, uh, who work under a certain amount of hours per week, uh, that they're included in this part of the budget. Uh, workers' comp, um, that, we do have a, a decrease going into next school year. Uh, this is all of our, the premium that we pay, um, to have, um, insurance coverage for all of our, uh, staff. Uh, the health benefit number, um, this number is, um, uh, going up, uh, not, not as much a, a, as originally anticipated. Uh, this is for all of our, uh, medical, uh, prescription and dental coverage. Uh, tuition reimbursement is, uh, as per the, uh, contracts, any, uh, reimbursement that we, um, uh, give back to the staff for any, uh, classes that they take. Um, our other benefits, um, this is basically any, uh, uniform allowance for, uh, custodians. Uh, we have our, um, uh, fees that we have to pay for flexible spending account, uh, for COBRA administration, uh, that's all included in this budget. And our compensated absences, um, this is also as per contract, whenever we have a, uh, an employee retire, uh, we have to, if we have to pay them out for any unused sick days or any unused vacation days, um, that, that's included in this part of the budget, and we do have, have an increase going into, uh, to next year for that. Uh, so this told, uh, uh, benefits-wise, the budget amounts, uh, in next school year about, uh, 20% of the, uh, the budget, um, so as I said, those are like the, the two, uh, largest parts, our benefits and salaries, um, that make up the most part of the budget. Uh, so that's basically all of the, you know, the remaining part of the budget, um, from what was presented at our last meeting. Uh, so does anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions.
Yeah.
No.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's nothing more on the presentation, we're gonna move on. Okay. I don't know how we're gonna do, second in the motion, so I guess somebody is trying to.
Oh, why don't we go the, the way that we usually do?
Okay.
That order.
That sounds good. All right. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 and B2, please?
So moved.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of March 11th, 2020, and B2 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No.
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 Please. Yeah, I did say roll call.
Okay, sorry. None of your, Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B3?
So moved.
Second.
B3 is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet, um, the January 23rd to February 25th, and February 26th to March 16th. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please. Mr. DeVita.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Is that a yes, Ms. Miga?
Yeah.
I think we-
I don't know, she, she, she might have lost her, if she's, if she's not responding.
Move there.
That we just lost her, so let's, uh, let her dial back in and give it a second.
Wait a-
Yep.
All right.
All right, she's dialing back in.
There she goes.
I'm back.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Waiting on your vote. Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Oh, boy. Under business, I have a motion for, uh, B4. Where does it go? Hold on, okay, one to B7, please.
So moved.
Second.
B4, uh, resolve that the final intended budget, annual district budget statement and supporting documentation for the 2020-21 school year be submitted for approval to the Essex County Superintendent of Schools. B5 is a motion to accept the donation of cleaning and school supplies to MS. B6 is a motion to approve the form of amended 403B plan. B7 is a motion to approve student transportation services for the spring athletic season. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under Personnel, I believe we have a superintendent's report.
I believe we do, don't we? Yes.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Board President Dai. So mostly a few quick comments and then a, a great big thank you, but let me just start off by saying how grateful I am for the support of this Board of Education, the administrative team, our support staff, including the secretaries, this child study team, the counselors, the paraprofessionals, to the custodians, and most importantly, the talented educators on our team who have approached our current virtual learning challenge with creativity and imagination. They are role models who expect and ask the same of their students. I couldn't be more proud of them. Our first day of virtual learning encountered a few bumps along the way, understandably, but we're off to a good start. Please let us know how we can further support your child's needs while they are at home. An announcement here, effective the close of business on Wednesday, by the end of the school day this Wednesday, all staff will be transitioned to off-site working. It's time for all members of our team to retreat to their homes while continuing to provide virtual learning and support for your children at home. for your children at home, their own children, and our staff. We will keep lines of communication open, so please feel free to reach out to any one of us for assistance. Lastly, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the community of Cedar Grove for its ongoing support. The COVID-19 pandemic is affecting the educational landscape and our lives in unprecedented ways that are yet to be fully realized. Please recognize the importance of social distancing and give the best of yourselves and your families at home. I'll just add that working together, we will get through this. Thank you, Mrs. Dai.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. Under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S7?
I'm sorry, you broke up.
I'm sorry. Can I have a, under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S7?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from March 11th. S3 is a motion to accept the resignation of Diana Nguyen, grade 2 teacher at North End School for purpose of retirement. S4 is a motion to retroactively approve Kelly Sabia, North End School paraprofessional, the rate listed. S5 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S6 is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers. And S7 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Fandoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. So this is the part where I'm going to unmute everyone. And so I just asked that everybody kind of, if anybody wants to speak, they just take a turn. And if you hear somebody speaking ahead of you, just kind of wait your turn. Again, you'd have to state your first and last name, your address, and then you're welcome to address us. So bear with me one second. All right, and you, everybody should be unmuted now. So I'll ask again, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. And I won't be as quick with my virtual gavel since this might take a little bit.
Hi, that work?
Yeah, we hear you.
Jennifer Crenti, 10 Yorkshire Drive. I just, I was tuning in to listen to some of the budget information. And of course, I know Mr. Featherman always knows that this is my first thing that I say is I'm really concerned about the lack of school counseling at the schools. And I would just ask that the board pay some special attention to that area, especially given the circumstances that we're in right now, where we are going to have students who have to kind of live through these experiences that they haven't lived through before. And in this age where we are kind of, you know, demanding of them to be on screen time and social medias and stuff, and we see a rise in these things, we don't have that adequate support at the elementary school where we really have to begin to build the foundation. So when they get to the high school, you know, we're able to focus on other issues. And I can definitely say that the middle school is in that same boat where they don't have the support they need. And so I would just ask that the board consider or make plans or are there plans to look into school, more school counselors to support the students. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Featherman, do you want to address that?
Yes, let's see how I do here. Thank you for commenting, Mrs. Crenti. And yes, of course, as soon as you introduced yourself, I think I said out loud, it would be about expanding our counseling program. And the board and myself agree, we are doing all that we can to prioritize the expansion of counseling in grades pre-K through 12. And so while it's not explicitly stated in the budget that we are hiring an additional counselor, I just want to mention that what we have done in the last couple of years and will continue to do is expand our reaching individuals socially and emotionally program, the RISE program that Mr. Kinney started a couple of years ago. We have realized some growth in our ESEA and IDEA grant funding. And the last couple of years, we've added 10 additional hours per week of social work support at both North End, South End, as well as the middle school, and quite frankly, the high school. And we are counting on those increased dollars once again to continue to expand the amount of hours we can provide to our learning community. You couldn't be more right that particularly in today's environment, our students need more social, emotional support than ever. I am committed and will remain committed to getting another counselor in this budget just as soon as I can. This board has had to make tough decisions from top to bottom. And I can only assure you that one of my top priorities will be to continue the expansion of social, emotional support in our school district.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come up and say anything? Or come up and say anything? I'm going to give it just another minute or so.
Yep. Just in case.
All right. Okay, well then, I close that portion of the meeting. But however, obviously, if somebody has a question about something on the agenda or something that they saw and they didn't necessarily want to ask in this type of venue, you know, as I said at the last meeting, just, you know, call Mr. Featherman and/or email him. I mean, in light of everything, he'll still be checking his email and he'll be happy to get back to you. Announcement.
Absolutely.
I don't know where, and I don't know how, but we're going to meet on April 21st. Normally, I say same time, same place. None of that is true right now. All I know is we're going to meet on April 21st, either virtually or in person. And then the next meeting will be May 7th. So anything further from the board?
No, we're good.
No.
No.
No, just a simple thank you to everybody for their patience and everything with this.
Absolutely. We do appreciate it. We know that this isn't easy for everyone. I mean, even this part of putting the meeting together wasn't easy. So we appreciate everybody's patience and support and as we all kind of go through this together. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Fandoria.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, the meeting is over. Have a good evening and stay safe. Good night now.